Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'm going to call to order the meeting of the committee as a whole for February 22nd. And we just have one item on tonight's agenda, and that's the House Bill 1590 update. And Doug, did I understand you were going to lead us through?
I am Council President Corman, so if you're ready, I will share my screen and take you all through it.
Yes, please go right ahead.
Okay, so good evening to all of you. I'm going to take you through our proposed early action plan for 1590, the 1/10th of 1 cent sales tax for investing in affordable housing, mental health, and homelessness. As we go through this, I think a reminder that we as staff, and with the blessing of the mayor, are giving you a sense of what we could do in this year one. This is something that is for the long haul, so we'll give you a sense of how we're trying to prepare for that as well, and would love your feedback. So just a review of House Bill 1590. Remember that this was enacted by the 2020 state legislature. And what the legislature did in the 2020 session is they amended a 2015 law whereby a 1/10th of 1 cent sales tax for affordable housing had to be adopted through voter approval. And House Bill 1590 changed that so that a county or city council could approve that 1/10th of 1 cent. In passing that bill, they provided counties first dibs, if you will, so until September 30th of 2020, to impose that 1/10th of 1 cent through their county council action. And if the counties hadn't acted by that September 30th date, then cities were able to access the authority. So dialing back to what we did in Renton, remember that the council, I think with the understanding that King County was very likely going to be adopting this, the council had some discussions and looked at the issues in Renton and the needs in Renton and things like the presence of the Renton Housing Authority. And as a reminder, council unanimously voted back on October 5th, 2020, to go ahead and enact the 1/10th of 1 cent sales tax for Renton purposes. That was ordinance 5983. And I think in making that decision, you all had several considerations. Knowing that the 1/10th of 1 cent was going to be collected on the sales of goods and materials, I think there was a desire to see it most effectively and most directly used in the Renton community, keep the dollars in Renton, obviously with an awareness of a significant affordable housing homelessness and mental health set of needs in our own backyard. And the council, along with commenting on the partnership with the Renton Housing Authority, I think several of you made the point that you could still effectively partner with the likes of King County or the South King Housing and Homelessness Partnership and others on subregional and regional investments. So with your action and the city's notification to Department of Revenue, that 1/10th of 1 cent sales tax took effect January 1st of this year. And remember that King County also adopted that, what they called their Health Through Housing Initiative. And seven other cities besides Renton, including some of our neighbors like Kent, went ahead and adopted the 1590 1/10th of 1 cent as well. So when that occurred, we, under the mayor's direction, took several steps. One of the first things we wanted to do was really begin to quantify some of the needs and put some data and some metrics behind what types of investments were going to be needed for the long haul. So the city already had a housing needs study underway, and that was continued and amended to also look at human needs so that later on this year, we get back some really good data on not just what is needed, but how much of it is needed in various ways and places. We also, at the mayor's direction, formed an interdepartmental staff team. So the mayor's office, CED, Community Services, Finance, Police, Legal, all gathered, and we wanted to, for council purposes, develop a first-year early action plan so that we could present something to hit the ground running when the first allocations came to us. And when we talk about first allocations, typically with sales tax, there is a two-month lag between when it is remitted and when it comes back to a locality. So even though, in our case, I shared that it started January 1st, we knew that the first remittance to the city was not going to occur until March 1st of this year. So in essence, we have 10 months of a year, not 12 months. And we had had a $2.8 million projection from Finance. We backed that off a little bit, just to be conservative, and used a $2.5 million figure, prorated it at 10 months, and you'll see when we go through this that we worked off of a figure of $2.08 million for year-one early action funds. And then remember that the 1590 statute is not what I would call a freewheeling, abundantly flexible statute. There are very specific buckets of funds and very specific direction in terms of how they may be used, and so that is something that we'll need to bear in mind going forward and with legal review of decisions and the like. But as you can see here, the statute says that at least 60% of the funds have to be used for construction of affordable housing, mental and behavioral health facilities, and funding of O&amp;M costs for those new units of housing and facilities and persons with behavioral health disabilities. And then you can see the types of people that the funds can be used toward. It's very specific around behavioral health, disabilities, domestic violence, veterans, seniors, families with children who are homeless or at risk of being homeless, and then unaccompanied homeless youth and young adults. There's actually a bill pending this session to loosen a couple of those things up that I'll mention later on. And the statute, with the 60%, what we did then is calculate that for us, that year-one minimum investment, again, booking 60% of the funding we anticipated, would be about just under $1.25 million. Then the statute gives a second set of direction and says that up to 40% of the funds can be used for operation delivery or evaluation of mental and behavioral health treatment programs and services or housing-related services. So again, working, you know, through the numbers, that up to 40% category amounts to a maximum of $832,000 of our year-one dollars. So then we had several discussions of where it might make sense to present early action investments to you, and we tried to bear in mind several things that we heard from you and that we knew to be in the works. We heard about the desire to partner with the Renton Housing Authority. We knew that with police and elsewhere in the community, increasing mental and behavioral health service needs. Additionally, we already know that we have a priority around a permanent relocation of homeless feeding program and shelter services that are temporarily at the edge of the airport. So as we talked through some of the possibilities in terms of what to bring to you all, one of the things that stood out was a project going on right now with the Renton Housing Authority that would be at their current headquarters site, and that's what's known as the Sunset Gardens Project, a project intended to serve veterans, homeless, chronically homeless, 76 units. That looked to us to be a very, very good fit with the 1590 expenditure requirements. It also happens to be a very time-sensitive project. Renton Housing Authority has gotten some funding from King County. They need to have matching fund secured or pledged to go with it. So within our early action plan, what we have put forth as a recommendation here is a year-one early action investment for Sunset Gardens of $1 million with the notion of $500,000 additionally for year two. Again, we also, looking at the statute and this at least 60% category, we looked at this idea of facilities with housing-related programs provided. And we thought some of what we are working on with the homeless feeding program, cold weather shelter, the idea of developing hygiene facilities and wraparound services to go with those relocated services could be a fit. We got from Community Services some early cost estimates, and I want to emphasize rough estimates of what it was going to cost in taking the shelter and hygiene facilities and wraparound services from a temporary location to a permanent one. And you can see some of the numbers there, a one-time $500,000 estimate to do things like a modular home unit, a hygiene unit, utility hookup, site design, and fencing. And then continuing on and looking further at that set of needs, you can see some of the, again, rough and early cost estimates of what it was going to take ongoing. Now, that $650,000 a year I mentioned, again, we need to be careful here because not all of the things that I'm listing around contracting and security personnel and NEAL's program are eligible for this funding, and we cannot use funding that we've already budgeted. The 1590 is intended to be for needs that haven't already been put in the budget. So we needed to be cognizant of that. We also are aware that the fact that we have a 2020 capital budget allocation, you may remember that we worked with then Representative Pedigree in particular on, for $206,000 toward this relocation of the feeding and shelter programs. And so we conservatively recommended a year-one investment level of $400,000. So that gets us close to that at least 60% figure we talked about at about $1.4 million. Then in that up to 40% bucket, one of the things we looked at in particular and that the mayor had been having some early discussions around with his peer mayors was just this burgeoning need around mental health treatment and services. And we knew already that Renton Police has been part of about a seven-city coalition in South King County that was looking for existing state grant dollars. And late in 2020, we found out that of a $360,000 grant application for that, there was a grant of $250,000. However, it was spread across several cities only for six months and with things like a mental health professional and navigator housed in Des Moines. So the staff team talked about that and thought that those services are so critical that it might be helpful to have them augmented and more conveniently located. And I mentioned earlier that our neighbor city of Kent had adopted the 1590, and Mayor Pavone and Mayor Ralph of Kent had had some early conversations about how the two cities might be able to collaborate together on these types of mental health and treatment and field response services. So we looked at the notion here of collaborating with Kent and having each city commit about $300,000 worth of its early 1590 funds to supplement that temporary seven-city coalition funding, and that would get us at least one additional mental health professional, two additional navigators, services probably a little more conveniently located to the Renton community. And we also thought that there might very well be a need to take those kinds of services and treatment and other things broader than just toward police needs. So here you can see, again, in the recommendation phase, a year-one investment recommendation of $300,000. So then, again, in this up to 40% category, this gives you a sense of more of the funding we can use. I mentioned before that you have things like services. You can also have treatment programs and services that are housing-related. And here we thought that the operation delivery or evaluation of mental and behavioral health treatment programs and services geared toward our relocated feeding program and cold weather shelter and wraparound services could be another eligible use of funding. So you see here, we suggested $100,000 in early action dollars there. So if you're toting that up, you're getting to about $1.8 million. And the reason we didn't go right up to the 2.08 is we thought that especially to give the council some flexibility and some maneuverability and some ability to redirect some of this if desired, that it would make some sense to leave some dollars in reserve. So, you know, we recommend that so that there'd be about $200,000 in reserve, again, for flexibility purposes, again, knowing we have to complete a housing and human needs assessment. And frankly, knowing there may be needs that we aren't completely aware of today in late February. So we list here the notion of $200,000 plus dollars in reserves. And I mentioned earlier on that we even know the statute that all this is based on is potentially going to change. There's a bill pending in Olympia, for example, to make the homeless families and youth part of the statute a little more nimble so that it can be used for homeless individuals. So, you know, we may see some different things in statute. King County has asked that the statute be more intentional about allowing acquisition of property for housing needs. Looking forward, we think there's a lot to look forward to. Again, we think there's a whole variety of partnership opportunities that could make sense here. We've already talked quite a bit about the Renton Housing Authority. The council may see fit in the future to partner with King County. We have several other cities that have adopted 1590 funding. Again, we have the South King Housing and Homeless Partnership. As a reminder, council last year dedicated first-year money from what we called the 1406 statute, the state sales tax credit for affordable housing, which was about $236,000 a year additional for Renton. You agreed to dedicate your first-year dollars there with an ask that that be reevaluated, and you see how it was used. So in addition to partnerships outside our four walls, we also think there's potentially some other Renton-specific funding ideas. Within the staff team, we talked about a housing opportunity fund that CED had previously used. We know there's a lot, a lot of state and federal money right now going toward emergency rental assistance. That may not always be the case, so maybe in the future, that could be a need. And so some closing thoughts here. Again, whetting your appetite with this year-one early action, I guess I would emphasize that this is not a short-term proposition. Under 1590, we are going to have funding coming to us every year, and we're probably going to want to formulate a longer-term plan as to how we go about using those dollars. And I mentioned the first-year revenue we projected at $2.8 million and even backed off of that. Likely when we get post-pandemic, that's probably going to grow toward $3 million a year or more. We also know we're going to have a learning curve. We're just getting into this business of administering these funds. We've never managed or done it before, and so there's going to be things that we know six months from now that we don't know today. And in the future, we're going to want to consider how best to administer these dollars, and we think in year two and beyond, that's going to become a bigger and bigger issue and one that probably the mayor and council will want to have some direction and authority over. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have. That sort of consists of our staff recommendation on up to you all so that we can be ready for March 1st, when the dollars come in the door, and I'll stop sharing so we can all see each other.
Hey Doug, thank you so much. That's a great presentation, a great approach. I realized I got a note just a couple minutes before the meeting. I was supposed to let Chip introduce you at the beginning of this, and I think I'd like to just give him a chance if he had anything he wanted to add to the discussion before we jump into questions. Chip?
Well, thank you, Council President Corman, Councilmember with Chip Vincent. You know, I guess you can say that Doug Levy is one of those individuals that just needs no introduction, based on the president he's brought here today. No, I, Council President Corman, I have nothing to add. I just want to underscore the point Doug had made in his presentation that this is really a collaborative approach from almost all the departments of the city, working together here with the mayor's office to really find a really good balanced approach that we could advance to you for your consideration.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I thank you. I thank everyone that's worked on it, and I really liked the mix of different, you know, different places that we can really make a difference. With that, I'd like to dump into the council questions and comments. I'll look for hands raised, or you can just shout out if you're a council member, either one. Yeah, Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you, Council President Corman. I always hesitate to go, excuse me, I hesitate to go first. So, but I'll jump in because I do have a couple questions and some feedback. Great presentation, Doug. Appreciated this presentation. Really appreciate the proposal from the administration to focus, from what I see, pretty largely around mental health, and I think that's really important, and I think a wise use of these dollars. A couple of questions I had popped up. I'll start with my first one and give other councilmembers the opportunity to ask in case they have similar questions. I really like the collaboration, the proposal to collaborate with Kent. I think that makes sense as a good starting place. I guess my question is, will we, should that be successful? And I suppose it would. It seems like to me that that program could certainly serve Renton solely, I mean, to me, the need could be greater, where I'm wondering if, is that, could we have more people doing this work at a future date if we could grow it into that? Because I would worry that, while I think it's great to collaborate with them, that from a capacity standpoint, we could be somewhat limited.
Councilmember McGurven, I think it's a great question and one we talked about. We certainly, within the staff team, also discussed the fact that we're on the verge of standing up a community court. And obviously, the community court is going to be another place where we're going to be referring people who need assistance or treatment. And, you know, as that matures, there may be needs that grow out of the community court operation. So we certainly think it's possible that there will be additional needs there, and while we thought it made sense to partner with Kent initially, we may find that to be a great fit. We may find, as you suggested, that we need to have more of just a Rentonized use of dollars that are closer to home. So I think the staff team understands that that one could evolve.
Councilmember Perez.
Thank you. My question was very similar of Councilmember McGurven. So again, thank you. Thank you, Chip. Thank you, Doug, and especially all the staff. I know that this is a holistic approach, and I very much appreciate that. In the same topic of what Councilmember McGurven asked, if this partnership with Kent happened to be successful and we serve our community stronger, we happen to be one city that both of our city's neighbors is keeping Newcastle, not because Newcastle doesn't mind, but because, you know, the size of the city, is Bellevue and Kent, and both of the cities adopted the same ordinance that we did. So if this partnership is successful, are we looking to increase this partnership with also with Bellevue, or is something that has not even been discussed?
Councilmember Perez, that's certainly a possibility. We talked a bit about Bellevue. We've taken a look at some of their early actions and ordinance, and, you know, while we didn't pinpoint that as an early action, it's certainly something that emerges as a possibility. And I think as our program and use of $1590 matures and their cities does as well, that certainly could be another potential.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you so much, Council President Corman. I have two questions related to the Sunset Gardens proposal. The first is, well, we know that the Housing Authority will be building the site. Do we have a partner agency who will be managing it?
I'm going to throw that one over to Chip. Do you know who is going to manage the construction for Renton Housing Authority?
Well, I wasn't speaking, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt. I wasn't speaking to the construction. I was speaking to after it is built, who will be managing the facility, doing the intake and the services.
Or Renton Housing Authority will.
RHA.
Okay. So Renton Housing Authority will be doing that work directly with those communities?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. And then a related question is, are there going to be associated costs for helping to support that community with mental health services and other wraparound that we ought to consider as we are trying to support that development?
Councilmember Benedetti, that's another one of those that I'd put in the entirely possible category. I think we felt like that whole arena of mental health services, treatment, assistance to individuals could have a lot of worthy takers. So that's, you've identified another one. That is an area where we don't have, we don't have a majority of the dollars. In other words, that's the part of the money that fits in that no more than 40% category. So we took admittedly a best shot at what might make some sense in year one with an understanding that, you know, as a few of you who've already identified, there's probably several malleable ways to stretch those dollars elsewhere.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Council President. And my question is similar to Councilmember Benedetti, but in terms of, you know, as I see, you know, this is the first attempt in first presentation regarding the bill and what could potentially be, and so thank you for the presentation. But my concern has always been that, you know, our human services department and not being able to fully support our community, right? Given that for the last eight years, there hasn't been an increase in human services funding. And I think I might have mislooked, but the reserve that we have, or the number that I saw was 100,000 to mental health services, which is that category up to 40%. And of course, we have the reserve at 200K. So I guess my thought is that I would like us to potentially work and look at different scenarios to see how we can further support the money within the requirements, of course, to support the human services department that we have, and further to support our nonprofits that have been supporting in the areas of mental health. I am concerned to, you know, like we mentioned previously, and I'm hearing community through the last few weeks in our community conversation last week as well regarding, you know, ending homelessness and how we go about with, of course, preparing as we recover from COVID-19 and the growing number of folks who will be up in the streets, how do we go about building How do we go about building that and providing that safety net through these dollars? So those are just some of my concerns.
One of the, I guess, clarification, I think there was also 300,000 that was dedicated to the partnership with Kent, and that was the first year, right, Doug?
Yes, yes. So Councilmember Van is correct. We did, we did leave a couple of hundred thousand dollars in reserve, and that's certainly an area where council could use its discretion within, obviously, the bounds of following the 60% and 40% buckets under the law.
Councilmember Van, did that, did that address your question there or your concern?
Yeah, generally, but I would like us to perhaps look into the numbers a little bit more and perhaps, obviously, this is continuing conversation and dialogue. My concern, and I do care for our south sound, you know, our communities, our southern county communities and so forth, but as we voted on council for this to be very much money that is our own residence tax dollars to supporting our residents. And my concern as of, you know, what has happened in our city and what will potentially happen after COVID, right? So it's really the Renton residents are my concern in this respect, yeah.
Good. And if I may pick up on that point, I, I'll be interested in, so first of all, I wanted to say, I think this was a great job. I'll restate that I think this was a great job putting a proposal together for this year. And since we're already collecting this money, I think it is, it's great that we have a proposal in front of us, that council will have to make the final decisions about how we use this money. But we do need to get going, and of course, there's need. But I was going to say, in addition to that, I would like to think about sort of the long-term approach that we use and maybe incorporate something similar to the Human Services Advisory Committee, where we have citizens that can participate in helping us make these decisions annually about how the money is spent. And, you know, I guess I'm curious, Doug, was there any discussion about that at all? Or maybe it's not fair to put you on the spot about that, but in the future years, about how we might, you know, sustain our decision-making on this?
Council President Corman, we didn't talk a great deal about how to build an advisory component into the, you know, into giving the council input, though that might be a good parallel track to what you do in other areas. We definitely talked quite a bit about how the, you know, we're going to have to have a long-term plan about administering those dollars and ensuring that they're spent correctly under the statute. And, you know, ultimately, that may take, that may take some people. We don't know yet, but.
Okay, good. Thank you. Councilmember Perez.
Thank you, Council President Corman. Two things, Doug. Maybe I misunderstood. What I understood is that the partnership with Kent is to make the most out of our dollars, not without serving less people in Renton, but serving everybody in Renton, but serving everybody with our money Renton, but making more by partnership with Kent. This is an experiment, right? So we don't know if it's going to work. So as Councilmember McGurven said, we serve our community first, and if this partnership is not working, then we would rethink the idea. Am I misunderstanding this?
No, I think that's an excellent summary, Councilmember Perez.
Okay. So the other part is, I don't know exactly what are the restrictions on these dollars. I know that there is a lot of restrictions, but what Councilmember Corman, President Corman was mentioning is our Human Services Commission normally provide once a year recommendations of what are the organizations that we will be supporting annually. We have not been able to increase that amount of dollars in the last years, not, I will not say eight years, because, you know, eight years include part of the recession. So let's say the last four years. I don't know exactly if this amount of money can be used or is restrictive to allocate it for the human services allocation of sources. I don't know.
And that's one where, when I mentioned earlier in the presentation, that we're going to want to have a very hand-in-glove relationship with departments like legal. Because the statute is very persnickety, I'll call it, in naming specific audiences, we have to be a little careful about whether we can just allocate general human needs dollars. But certainly within the law and where audiences can be served and it can match up with human needs and organizations that serve particular audiences, there probably are ways to sort through that.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Councilmember Benedetti.
Thank you, Council President. And I do want to echo some of the sentiments of some of my other council members. Thank you so much. This was a really detailed and excellent presentation and really speaks to trying to make the most of these dollars. I want to go back to the, to the piece around transitioning from the feeding site that we, the Cold Weather Shelter site that we have now. So looking at these expenses, are they related to the transition, or what will they get us to? Will we have a functioning, functioning site at the end of that? Or is there, will there still be more expenses to come in order to achieve that goal?
So Councilmember Benedetti, I think we're having very promising discussions about a permanent location for all of that. With things that we don't have at the 300 building right now, there is no hygiene facility there, for example. The shelter is strictly during cold weather periods when it's in essence turned on. I think the staff team has had some discussions about perhaps a permanent shelter could go beyond that. There have been also discussions about other services. As one example, the Arise Shelter is looking for a permanent home. So we feel like if we, as part of this, if we have a permanent site and we're moving not only facilities but hygiene facilities, we should be able to meet some of the 1590s spending purposes there on an ongoing basis. And some of them fit, some of them don't. Just an emergency feeding program likely doesn't fit the statute, but some of the services aspects do. I hope that helps answer your question. And I see, I see Kelly's here too. She may want, wish to jump in.
Yeah, I was just trying to get a sense. Feel like enough money to transition in a, in a transition from the site that we're in? I just wanted to see how far it was going to get us.
Kelly, do you wish to respond to that one?
Sure. Thanks, Doug, and thank you, Councilmember Benedetti. As Doug noted in the early on presentation, these are very rough estimates at this point. Some are one-time costs to get a site established and in place, and then the rest would be ongoing costs. So we are hopeful that these funds will definitely get us a permanent site, if you want to call it permanent site. And then, yes, that the programs would be related around behavioral health and transitioning people out of homelessness, as well as some of the other programs that are listed, some of the things that we don't have currently at 300 rein year. So the hygiene center and those type of services. Obviously, year one, very early on in our conversations, and definitely can expand as we start moving forward.
Thank you. Councilmember McGurven.
Thank you, Council President. I want to certainly echo some of the sentiments I heard. It was a thought I had as well, as far as community input on how we allocate these dollars. 100% agree with that. Would love to see that certainly baked into the future process, whether that be through the Human Services Advisory Committee or other groups. I know we heard a lot, a lot of testimony when we were considering doing this. So I know there's a lot of groups out there who have opinions on how we're spending it. So would love to make sure we're at least taking community input on that as much as possible on this first cycle, but certainly in future years as well. The question I have that relates to the timing of this, as you mentioned, the statute's quite persnickety, I believe was the word, on how this is spent. Is there a limitation on timing? Because if we're, are we going to get to the end of this and if we collect more than we thought, or we have this reserve, do we have to spend it by a certain date, or does that roll over to the next budget cycle?
A great question, Councilmember McGurven. And I'd almost looked to our legal department folks for help, but there isn't, there isn't any explicit language in the statute saying you have to spend every nickel you get in year one during year one. So we believe there's some flexibility to roll dollars over. We can double-check that for you.
Good question. Councilmember Van.
Thank you, Council President. And just, I think I heard, if I, I heard correctly that, and I saw on the screen, I'm just looking at two screens here, but when we talk about collaboration with King County, have we as individual council members, have we as thoughtful leaders thought of potentially how we can support residents who are currently here within the Renton jurisdiction? Because if I'm hearing it correctly, that, you know, even though we're partnering with Kent, we're still serving Renton residents, right? And folks who are at the Red Lion Hotel are now residents, unless we define it differently. So how are we working with them in this particular quote-unquote project or issue that we're addressing? I know that there is lawsuits and so forth, but I just wanted to go out there with council to discuss because we never really have any opportunity to talk about it.
So Councilmember Van, I can, I can take a shot at that. The city is having ongoing discussions with King County. I think in terms of partnering with the county on these dollars, we wanted to be a little careful about diving into partnerships before we presented anything to council. So we certainly labeled that a potential partner, but we, I don't know that we felt comfortable saying that we wanted to enter into partnerships and name specific designations of dollars, but certainly there are ongoing conversations with the county.
Okay, and Councilmember Perez, I noticed you had your hand up, but not anymore, so okay. Okay, you'd like to, yeah, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I meant to raise it, and I probably am raising. Thank you, Council President Corman. Coming back to the comment of Councilmember McGurven, I remember when we had the discussion about this, we did talk about an assessment of needs. Okay, this is still on the table, right?
Yep.
Yes, very much so. And we have both the housing and human needs assessment that are underway. And Chip, do you remember the due date on that?
It's actually coming up this spring, but we initiated a contract with Burke and Associates to do both of those for us, that human services needs assessment and the housing needs assessment for the Renton community. And it's part of our long-term plan is to ensure that the monies that we have for 1590 are being spent in the areas where we get the greatest results. So as Doug said at the beginning, this is just initial, out of the starting gate, but we will have much better data based on these assessments to inform decisions moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, and I think I should, you know, we're getting close to wrapping up for this evening, but I, I guess we would, we would look forward to some, first of all, I guess I, for the community that may be listening into the meeting, we're always receptive to emails. I'd love to hear the community response to the presentation as presented. And I thank the staff for being thorough and covering the various areas, so there's some good content there for the community to respond to. And then I think near term, maybe, we'd start to look for some budget adjustment amendments to come through along with some spending, I suspect. And Chip, maybe you have an idea of how, you know, what the next step would be for some of, like, the early things that we want to do here? Say the partnering with the Renton Housing Authority, for instance?
Yeah, exactly. We, what we would want, the first part of that is frankly having this conversation with you all here tonight in terms of making sure that we're all collectively on the same page in terms of what are priorities as this initial first step. Then we will start coming back to you with recommendations, putting this together in a package. Because as Doug said, this is just the early reaction. We're gonna, this will really help inform our long-term decision-making, our public process, and how we really formalize this over time.
Good. Well, I think it's, I think it's well done. It's a, it's a great start. And can I ask, council, we've only got a few minutes left. Are any final questions or comments? Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so thank you to all of you for making this meeting a success. And again, a reminder to the community that we're interested in your input too. Feel free to email the council with ideas or reach out to any council member. And with that, I'll go ahead and, let me ask, there's no report, right? It's expected. We don't, Chip or Doug, you didn't have a report that we needed to approve the status. Okay, so with that, I'll adjourn the committee of the hall and we'll reconvene in about 14 minutes for the regular council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you all. Great questions and comments.
Thank you.